Okay.
Good evening, everybody. It looks like we are streaming live, so I'll go ahead and call to order this regular session of the Auburn City Council for July 27, 2020. If the clerk would please take the roll.
Councilmember Dowden Calviou.
Hi, I'm in present.
Amara.
Rosa.
Mackey.
Here.
Spockley.
Here.
And Mayor Berlin.
And I am here. Before we do the pledge of allegiance, just wanted to take an opportunity, and I think Amy, you're going to throw it up on the screen. But due to the ongoing threat of COVID-19, this meeting is being conducted pursuant to the provisions of the governor's executive orders on public meetings. As we posted as part of the agenda, public comments have been accepted via email and telephone prior to the meeting. But as a effort, continued effort by the city clerk and myself on trying to expand our public involvement, just wanted to take a quick opportunity to remind those that are watching live tonight. That once again, you can provide public comments to the email address that you see on the screen during the meeting. If you would like to comment on an item, please email publiccomment@auburn.ca.gov, and we will do our best to ensure that your comment is read during that item. So Amy, thank you very much for putting that on to the screen. With that, if you would all please stand and draw me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it is a good, great honor tonight that we can kick off this meeting with a mayor's accommodation. And so joining us this evening is Ms. Brenda Roper, and it looks like we are adding her on to join us this evening. Brenda, hopefully you can hear us. You are on mute at the moment, but welcome. Well, wow. Go ahead, Brenda.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you just fine. Can't see you, but we can hear you. So Brenda, this evening, I wanted to take an opportunity and I put together a commendation to honor not only your nearly 40 years of service to the city of Auburn as a local businesswoman, but also congratulate you on your retirement. So tonight, we have a special commendation in your honor. There's a lot of wherashes, and Brenda, I'm going to read every single one of them.
Oh, gosh.
So a little bit of history about Brenda and her role here in the city. So the commendation reads, whereas Brenda Roper spent nearly 40 years working and managing Roper's Jewelers before retiring in June of 2020. Whereas Roper's Jewelers has been Auburn's hometown jewelers since 1956. The store was opened by Brenda's in-laws, the late Ralph and Helen Roper, just two doors down from its current downtown location. Brenda and her husband Harvey owned and managed the store alongside each other over multiple decades until his passing in 2014. Whereas Brenda Roper has held multiple positions at Roper's Jewelers over the years, including paying the bills, calculating payroll, counting inventory by hand, as she had mentioned, implementing new software technology, computerizing the financial records. And whereas all this work was done while Brenda Roper raised two sons, was active in their classrooms, participated in the parent teachers' club, and was noted was a, it was, and I assume is Brenda, a big Oakland Athletics baseball fan.
Yes, you got that.
Whereas Brenda's, excuse me, Roper's Jewelers is a family business. She stated that it was started by family, its employees became family, and now that extended family will carry on the Roper's family tradition. For those that don't know, longtime employees Lisa Henderson and Peggy Sitzinger are now the owners of Roper. So whereas Brenda Roper, while retired from Roper's Jewelers, will stay busy as a full-time grandma, pie baker, Star Trek fan, traveler, gardener, crossword puzzle fanatic, and amateur quilt maker. I don't know, Brenda, how you keep all that up. But now therefore I, Daniel Berlin, mayor of the city of Auburn, on behalf of the entire city council, then Brenda Roper on her accomplishments as a businesswoman in Auburn, and congratulate her on her retirement. So Brenda, congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mayor Berlin. I am overwhelmed and a little teary.
Well, is there anything you'd like to, you'd like to say? I mean, I know we've had you come speak in front of us before, and it's kind of a different world since we can't really see you. And we're talking on the computer, but again, pretty, pretty big milestones for you.
You know, I'm so used to speaking on Harvey's behalf. I'm a little overwhelmed to speak on my own, but I just really appreciate that you took the time to read my blog and understand what I did at the store. And it has been an institution for 64 years. It will continue to be one. I'm looking forward to my downtime such that it is. As soon as I sign off here, I have a pie to put in the oven, so. I am, I am deeply honored. Thank you so very much.
Absolutely. I want to allow an opportunity. I know many of our council members have worked with you on a number of initiatives. And so I'd like to open it up to the group to see if anybody else would like to, to say anything.
I, I'd like to say, congratulations, Anne. I know you raised two great sons. I had the honor of going back to school and taking a calculus class, and who was in the class but one of her sons? And he, he actually helped me get through that class. It was great.
Thank you. Yes, Lane remembers you well.
Oh, yeah.
I just, I'd like to congratulate Brenda as well. This is Cheryl Mackey, Brenda. And as a former business owner in Auburn and now retired, I just want to tell you, it's gonna be great. Thank you. Thank you, Cheryl. I hope we get to see you around town still, though, because I'll miss your smiling face if not.
Absolutely. Actually, I own the Hinklock Building, so I'm still vested in downtown. Yes, that's right.
Very nice. Alice, go ahead.
Yes, I was just gonna say, thank you so much, Brenda. Ropers will continue to be a treasure, a real gem here in the community. And best of luck to you on your retirement. We know you will be involved because you are a property owner in downtown. So we are grateful that we'll still have an opportunity to work with you on some projects possibly, but do enjoy this time. And again, thank you so much for everything.
Thank you, Alice. Appreciate it.
Go ahead, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brenda, Matt Spockley, how are you? Hey, I want to also congratulate you and thank you for all that you have done for our town. You and your late, great husband Harvey did amazing things for our small, little community, of which are too many and too long to try to list. Thank you so much for everything you guys have done. I still miss Harvey every day. Had a lot of fun times working with him and seeing the great things that you guys have done around our town. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it.
And again, for those who don't know, there are now new owners of Ropers in longtime workers. And I didn't realize that Lisa Henderson had worked for Ropers 31 years, Peggy Sitzinger 26. And for those of you who don't know, Brenda, and whether it's you or Anne or Harvey, Peggy at the time actually worked for my in-laws making sandwiches. And she went in there and the Roper stole her from the Millers. So obviously, there must be better business in jewelry than there are in sandwiches. But I know that the, my in-laws and my wife hold a special place for Peggy. And so it's great to see that your extended family, Lisa and Peggy, keeping on the Roper's tradition, so.
Thank you. Yes, I'm very pleased.
So again, Brenda, thank you very much. Thank you for joining us. I know those who are watching at home probably can't see your smiling face the way the screens here work. But Brenda, we appreciate you taking the time this evening to join us. So again, congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Have a great evening as well. And you're welcome to stick around. So we'll move on now to the agenda approval. This is the time set aside for council members and/or the public to ask for removal, postponement, and/or change to the listed sequence of an agenda item. The agenda will be approved by the roll call of the council. First, are there any council members that would like to make a change to the agenda? City clerk, is there anybody from the public who has asked for a change?
There is not.
Okay, hearing none. If I can, please get a motion.
I move approval. Go ahead, Sandy.
I move.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay, Amy, if you don't mind, please take a roll.
Councilmember Dowden Calviou.
Hi.
Amara.
Yes.
Mackey.
Hi.
Spockley.
Yes.
And Mayor Berlin.
And I. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine in nature and will be approved by one blanket motion with a roll call vote. There are no separate discussions of these items unless a person requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for discussion and separate action. Any items removed will be considered after the emotion to approve the consent calendar. And I am going to pull items four and six. Are there any council members that would like to pull an additional one? Yes, Alice, go ahead.
Yes, um, thank you for pulling item six. I had that on my list, but also item two.
Item two, all right. Anyone else? Okay, Amy, is there any items from the public to pull?
No, there is not.
Okay, so we are pulling items two, four, and six. That leaves all the odd number items there. So is there a motion to approve the consent calendar without those items?
I'll move approval of the consent calendar as amended.
I'll second. Okay, Amy, if you don't mind, please take a roll.
Councilmember Dowden Calviou.
Hi.
Amara.
Yes.
Mackey.
Hi.
Spockley.
Yes.
And Mayor Berlin.
And I'm an I. Okay, we'll go ahead and move then to item number two, and this is the surplus equipment. Councilwoman Dowden Calviou.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't really have any questions. I simply pulled this item off the consent agenda because there was an attachment that was initially missing. It was Exhibit A. And I just wanted to make the public aware that we did get that attachment later this, actually this morning, which is actually the list of items that were to be surplus. So I trust all the council members have seen that list, but for the purposes of the public, I wanted to make sure they knew that the list is now available if they had tried to get it earlier. So, and no other questions. So if you're ready, I'll be happy to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, it does look like Councilmember Spockley, go ahead with your question.
Yes.
And you're on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I know we've seen these lists before. We get them every year, surplus city equipment. In looking through this list, there was some, what, what I felt to be relatively high dollar, what I thought to be high dollar items with a very, very low value is, is Menjol, maybe you can describe to all of us how those values are established. For example, a Polaris Ranger valued $1,100. I'm sure they're used to, to their maximum life. But I, I do think that some who might look at this list might have questions on how these values are set. We've got a couple of buses that are 2011 buses. Again, I'm sure they're in driven to the wheels fall off, so to speak, but they're valued at $3,000. Can you help us better under, can you help me better understand how these values are established, Menjol?
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Spockley. The values are determined based off of a straight line depreciation. We kind of determine what the value of the vehicles and the equipment is going to be once we purchase it after a given amount of time of usage. And many of these items you see here, the values are quite low because they're not actually functioning at this time, or they don't have all the parts to operate correctly. We give it these values, we anticipate that it's probably and most likely will be sold for more than this, but this is what it would be valued at if the city were to try to go sell it to an individual right now.
Gotcha. So like on the vehicles, for example, Menjol, the, the 2005 Honda Civic, that, that $1,500 value, I have no idea how many miles are on the thing. But is there things like Kelley Blue Book? Are there schedules? I mean, I know that we do our depreciation in our financial system, but are there, are there comparable fair market values that are used on some things that are on this list, like the vehicles?
Yeah, so normally what we get these values for, especially the vehicles, we get that from our maintenance mechanics based off of what is the usable life left in the vehicle. This vehicle, the reason the price is so low on it is because the batteries on these vehicles, because it's a hybrid vehicle, are about $5,000 to replace once the big vehicles have been sitting for quite a while and not being driven. So it's the value you see there plus the cost of replacing the batteries, what the total value of this vehicle would be.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Again, I think it's important for us to make sure that our, our community understands what's happening here. And we're, we're not giving stuff away.
Oh, absolutely.
Quite literally, in many cases have, have, have driven these vehicles into the ground and put so many miles on them that they're, that they're, like you said, non-operational. But I do thank you for your responses, Menjol. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Councilwoman Mackey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Berlin. Um, Menjol, these all go to auction, correct?
Correct. So we, the city currently uses GovDeals.com, so we send it off to them to auction it off. And whatever value we get from it at that point is what we get. It's generally slightly higher than what you see here. These are just approximate estimated values that we have for the vehicles as they sit right now.
Right, right. Thank you, Menjol.
Absolutely.
And, Mr. Mayor, where, and where do we deposit those funds? Do they just go back into the general fund or whatever we obtained from the auction?
I think I can answer this one. When we sell the vehicles, like if we sell a public works vehicle, it goes back into the public works fund. If we sell a PD vehicle, it goes back to PD funds to help replenish new vehicles and new equipment for the future.
Great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, taking none, Councilwoman Dowden Calviou, you had mentioned you might have a motion.
Yes, I'd be happy to make a motion that by resolution, we declare a surplus to the city's needs. The equipment listed on Exhibit A and direct staff to contract, to contract with an auctioneer to assist the city in sale of equipment of properly disposed items.
I'll second. Okay, if the city clerk will please take the roll.
Councilmember Dowden Calviou.
Hi.
Amara.
Yes.
Mackey.
Hi.
Spockley.
Yes.
And Mayor Berlin.
And I'm an I as well. So the surplus equipment process. Thank you, Menjol, for joining us. Moving on to item number four, this is the confirmation of the proclamation 2020-03 regarding the COVID-19 emergency restaurant support program. I don't have a specific question, but if the rest of the council does, that's great. I just wanted to pull this item to note it mainly due to the fact that our city manager, who is not with us this evening, by the way, has been working with our restaurant owners. And if you have not driven around town, many of them are taking the offer up at the city to streamline through some of the permitting to allow for additional outdoor dining. Specifically, one, I wanted to note that in downtown, the business association has been working with a couple of businesses, one of which we put tables and the city permitted the closure of an alleyway next to Trey Pozzi Restaurant. There's been a lot of discussion about should roads, when will roads close? At this point, I am talking to our city manager and both business districts. There is no plan to close any roads, mainly due to the fact that most restaurants have been able to work with the city manager to take an opportunity for what we're about to uphold. And that is to allow for seating on the public right of way in the sidewalk, as well as a number that are using parking spaces that will extend technically into the roadway, but, but not in the roadway for moving traffic. So just wanted to take that opportunity to flag that expansion about their dining and that everything really is being driven by the request by the business owners. There was a lot of discussion about closing Lincoln Way, but those businesses have been able to come up with alternatives, the upper portion of Lincoln Way in downtown. And so at this point, there is no discussion of any road closures immediately pending. That was just a comment I wanted to make, but since we've got this item pulled, are there any questions by the council for, for Tanya or staff? Go ahead, Councilwoman Spockley.
You're muted, Matt.
All right, that's twice. I'll try not to do that again. I did get a couple of phone calls from a PCWA board member related to this outdoor dining idea and their desires. And I think it's been mentioned before, but I just want to reiterate this. Josh Alpine reached out to me a couple of times on, on this item. They're willing and able and ready to, to put hand sanitizing stations in and around these outdoor dining opportunities at no expense to the city. Josh wanted me to make sure that I let everybody know and, and they're ready to deploy. So as, as, you know, we get into this, you know, in more detail, if those items are necessary, they're certainly willing and able to help facilitate that and provide those facilities for our community.
That's great. Thank you. I will note that Councilwoman Mackey has actually brought it to staff's attention the last two weeks here. And I, city manager again is not on this evening, but in talking to him, the thought was to kind of wait until we figured out where the street closures would be, and that would be an ample place for them, since you have multiple restaurants in one location. And since that hasn't happened, I will hold up with the city staff to make sure that he is making that contact because that offer is a nice one, and I think that there's still some usage. It's just not going to be exactly where the city manager initially had, had planned to do that. So thank you for, for bringing that up. Appreciate that. Councilwoman Amara, go ahead, and then we'll come to Councilwoman Dowden Calviou.
A quick question. What is the turnaround for the application? If someone wants to go on the sidewalk or the street, do you know? Because I know there's a couple of places that have been inquiring.
Yeah, let me bring in Tanya Ward, our city planner. Tanya, do you know that answer?
I do. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. Tanya Ward, your senior planner. Typically, when all items are submitted with the checklist, it takes less than an hour.
Great. Yeah.
And we, we found that it's been, it's been very rewarding. I think that staff, along with the city manager and all of the businesses have, have really pitched in with this program, and we've seen some really, some good initial success. And we look forward to hopefully not having to have the program for a very long time. But when we do have the program, we, we find that it's really bringing a benefit to, to all of us.
And Councilwoman Amara, my dealings with the business associations, it sounds like while the city's permitting is almost instantaneous for one hour and our bureaucracy is pretty darn quick, but it really is more in the insurance and the ABC licensing that is, that is what results in the delay. So for example, Clubcar has been working for several days with the idea of moving into a number of the parking spaces up on the upper portion of Lincoln Way. The city has been staged and ready to go to issue that permit, but it's really been back on the business owner to get what other additional non-city permits or waivers or liability that is required as part of it.
Thank you.
Although that helps.
Clarification. And then just one other quick question in that regard. Do we have any surplus of funds or have we set aside any money from grants that we can assist the restaurant owners for things like umbrellas or misters or something lighting? I'm, and I'm not sure, is everybody just, are all the businesses just supplying all that on their own?
Well, with our city manager not here, and I don't see our finance director, Tanya, are you able to answer that? Or is that something we need to refer back to Bob Richardson for a response?
I think that might be better suited for Bob. I haven't, I haven't seen a need raised by the business owners. Most of the business owners have provided most of their own equipment. Very excited to move forward with the program. So they've, they've kind of come prepared as you see it today. But all options are open, and I would defer to Bob if there's any funding available for that purpose.
Okay, thank you. I will, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Amara. Tanya, if you don't mind, please flag in that question for the city manager. I'd appreciate that. Councilwoman Dowden Calviou.
Yes, just really a comment, and I'm just pleased to see so many restaurants that are taking us up on this offer. I know that there, some of them are coming, they're going through the pipeline. So, you know, there may not appear to be so many, but there are more coming and just really pleased to see that. Proud of the partnership that we're able to, to foster with them. And I hope that we can all get out there and help purchase food and then help stimulate the local economy that way. So very excited about this and anything else that we can further do to assist those restaurants during this, during this closure time, so.
Great, thank you. Any other questions on this item? Is there any public comment?
There is not.
Okay, great. With that, can I get an entertaining motion?
I'll move that we confirmed the amended proclamation number 2020-03 adopting rules and regulations under the Auburn Municipal Code, Section 34.04(c)(6) subsection A regarding the COVID-19 emergency restaurant support program.
I'll second.
Okay, if the city clerk will please take the roll.
Councilmember Dowden Calviou.
Hi.
Amara.
Yes.
Mackey.
Hi.
Spockley.
Yes.
And Mayor Berlin.
And I'm an I. Great, thank you. That item does pass unanimously. Tanya, thank you for joining us. Moving on to item number six, this is authorizing John Dunlevy, the incoming city manager, to provide part-time city manager services, excuse me, to the city of Winters through October 6. And real quick, I just wanted to introduce this item, and then our city attorney may have some items as well. Just for everybody's knowledge, including the public, as part of our negotiations with Mr. Dunlevy, who by the way, for the council, should you have any questions specific to him? He is in our Zoom wait room, so we can pull him in if there's any specific question you have for John. But as part of the negotiations, we did agree to allow him to phase out his time in Winters, working several meetings and days for the next couple of months at that location. In, in those discussions, we never formalized that. And in fact, in his agreement that we approved earlier this month, if not last month, it specifically required him to come back and get authorization from the city council to do any additional work outside of his employment with us. And so even though this is only for a couple of days, and it's a couple of days really that we've already gotten for free from the city of Winters over the last couple of weeks as he's been working for us. I just wanted to note that it was part of the initial discussions. It never was formalized. In talking to him, his intent is to continue to provide a 40-hour-a-week service to the city of Auburn, just to flex his hours a bit here and there so that he can attend a couple of meetings. And it has been made clear, and again, our city attorney can jump in here as well. Any days that he does not work in or for the city of Auburn, he would be required to use leave credits for those days. So just to be clear, we're talking about a couple of city council meetings, so he can wrap up. He would continue to do his work here. If he did not, then again, he would have to use some leave credit. Ask our city attorney to see if there's anything else he'd like to add real quick to this item, and then we'll take it for questions, comments, concerns. And I know we have some public comments. Gary?
Yeah, Mayor, that's correct. So there will be no reduction in responsibilities for John while he is, after August 10th and beyond here at the city. This simply authorizes him to perform limited part-time work for the city of Winters for that transition period, ends on October 6th. But he's still required to provide and dedicate full-time services and everything that's required under his contract here at the city of Auburn. Happy to answer any questions, too.
Great, thank you, Gary. Any questions on this item for Gary or other staff? Yeah, sure, I'll go ahead. Excuse me, Councilwoman Mackey, go ahead.
Gary, it would have been inappropriate to put the calendar that John sent us in the packet. It would have been a little bit more clear to the public, I think, how, how much John's, how much time he's already spent here and how little time he's going to be spending in Winters. In fact, two of those days that we're allotting him are Saturdays. So would that have been inappropriate to, so he's basically going to be gone seven days and four one-half days in the next two months? And I, I just wanted to get that out there for anybody that doesn't understand that.
Yeah, I think it's perfectly fine to note that here as part of the meeting that those are the days that he's requesting. I drafted it the way that I did because as the next month or so unfolds, it's possible those days could change or that something could change for what, what is needed in Winters versus here. But yes, he's currently requesting only very few days and just seven, as you've noted.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, Councilwoman Dowden Calviou.
Yes, I want really a question. Again, I, I just, you know, to confirm, of course, that if he is going to not work for the city of Auburn for an eight-hour period, if he's not going to flex or some other way, then he will use his form of leave for that. So essentially, if he's not, if he's going to be in Winters all day on a Monday, he'll either use leave for that Monday, or he'll make it up a different day. So that might be, he might work for the city of Auburn on Saturday. But essentially, we will, we will get our 40 hours a week. I'm not concerned about that. But you know, just again, formalize that he will be taking leave if there is a day that he's not, not able to work and not able to flex for the city.
Right, thank you. Councilmembers Spockley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think a different way to look at this is because John's so dedicated to the cities he works in, he's trying to create a smooth transition for the city of Winters. If we don't do this and, and hold this or approve this action tonight, then Gary, correct me if I'm wrong. He cannot be paid by the city of Winters for his time that he invests after hours on the weekends.
That's right.
Outside of his normal duties that he will still fulfill here in the city of Auburn. Is that correct?
Yeah, we potentially. Yeah, it would potentially violate the employment agreement between the city of Auburn and him, yes.
So this action would enable John to get paid for the time that he's putting in to assist the city that he's already given notice to transition a new city manager into his his former seat.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, I do think we have a public comment that with some questions that I think we have just answered now. But if the city clerk will please show us the public comment.
Sure, this public comment was received for this item and it was sent to the city council early this morning for them to read in full. And it's available in my office if anybody would like a copy. And that completes public comment for this item.
Okay, great, thank you. Any final comments from the council? Okay, with that, I think we've explained it well enough. And again, I realize that it was vague in the staff report and definitely didn't answer the question. So Gary, thank you for helping to answer those questions this evening to kind of help make sure that we put this into perspective, what this is and what it is not as well. So thank you. With that, I will entertain a motion, please.
I move that we authorize John Dunn Levy to provide part-time city manager services to the city of Winters through October sixth, twenty twenty.
I'll second.
Okay, if the clerk will please take the roll.
Councilmember Dowden Calviel.
I.
Amara.
Yes.
Mackey.
I.
Spockley.
Yes.
And Mayor Berlin.
And I am an I as well. Okay, the the authorization for John Dellevy does pass five to zero. And I will note, he will be meeting with the city manager and myself tomorrow as part of his ongoing transition prior to the start here. So we'll be getting some free hours out of him. That ends our consent calendar. So we'll move on to number item number eight. This is public comment. This is the time provided so the public may speak to the council on an item that is not on the agenda. As I stated earlier, under the governor's executive order related to public meetings, we have been accepting public comments via email and telephone prior to the meeting. And so I'll ask the city clerk if we have received any public comment.
I did not. Let me just double check that I did not receive any during this meeting. I have not received any public comment.
Okay, I failed to do, but I want to see, is there anybody from the city council that has a public comment they'd like to make? Okay, seeing them, we'll move to council business and item number nine, the Sustainability Advisory Committee. Again, we don't have our city manager this evening. But before us, our city clerk has provided the applications for the Sustainability Advisor Committee and the the discussion of the potential creating a subcommittee. So tonight, we really have two options. One is we can go through the process and discuss each of those applicants. Or my recommendation, as has been other council members, I think, in the past. And that is because this is not an at-large membership and it is specific and requires a little more due diligence. The idea of creating a subcommittee of two council members to review all the applications and bring forward a recommendation. So the city clerk is here and can talk about the process. And Amy, actually, if you don't mind, if I'm not mistaken, there's one category where we did not receive any applications. If you could explain that real quick and give us our options as well on that.
Sure. So when council asked that we sound coming through, okay? It's echoing on this side.
Oh, yeah, I was echoing a little bit, but go ahead.
Okay, council had asked that we did another recruitment for positions after the change on resolution twenty forty-one. We opened up the application period and it closed a week ago last Friday. We received application, a new application in that time and many of the prior applicants stated their interest in continuing on with this committee. So I completed a spreadsheet for all the applicants that are still active and I also indicated which ones have withdrawn. There are different categories that these people need to qualify for to serve on this on this committee. And as you'll see in the spreadsheet, we covered all the committees except for the one representing transportation and pollution control programs within the Auburn community. But we did have people apply for the at-large position, the Auburn Business or Development Development Community, the Agriculture or Manufacturing Industrial Use Option and the Environmental Protection Organization. So you still have that one position that has a vacancy even with the applicant applicants you have this evening.
Great, thank you. I'll go ahead and open up to questions from the council. It looks like Councilwoman Amara, go ahead.
Oh, yeah. Amy, how did, was it the individuals who applied? Did they put down what category they thought they were or was that something that you came up with? How how was that determined?
I emailed each applicant after the last meeting and the revisions to the resolution to ask them which positions they were interested in and or qualified for.
Okay, so this is just a comment. In looking through the applications, I think there's there's at least one who stands out based on her background that would cover the number, number two that you were talking about, the Pollution Control Program. If you want the name, I can give you the name, but that is completely covered. And I think sometimes it would be what I would do is that I would just pick the easiest one. And and I think this person qualifies for a couple. But anyway, if 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 the council would like to know which one, you can take a peek at that right now. It's up to you. But ultimately, I think they are all covered personally. And and I and then as far as I think Mayor Berlin asked, I think an ad hoc committee would be a great a great idea. It makes sense to do it that way.
Great, thank you, Councilwoman Amara. Councilwoman Dowden Calviel.
Yes, I was also going to speak in support to the establishment of the ad hoc committee as you and I had spoken about. Generally speaking, when we have our existing committees, we will ask the membership to review the applicants and then make recommendation to the council for appointment. Given that this is a new entity, we don't have that opportunity. So it just seemed to be a more comfortable fit to assign this to an ad hoc committee for the purposes of reviewing the applications, regardless of whether or not we go out to re-advertise for that one or not. But certainly to to give that opportunity for an ad hoc committee, take a look at them and then make recommendations to the full body for appointment. So I'm in support of that.
Great, thank you. Councilmembers Spockley.
Three times a charm.
All right, sorry about that. So so Amy, you mentioned you emailed out to each of these candidates. We still have three on the list that are not within the city limits. Was that discussed with those three? Because that still is requirement of this committee.
The only two positions require the applicant be within the city limits with the new resolution were the two at-large members. The other positions require the person to be involved in the Auburn community, so it's broadened that. And I and I do believe the person that had qualified for the position three that's in question for pollution or transportation is one of the applicants that withdrew their application.
Okay.
I could be mistaken on that.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize that we took that out. I knew we talked about it. I didn't realize it was removed. So apologize for that. I guess I'm I'm also in support of the of the subcommittee to to kind of help us round out this committee. There are some important things and important work that will be done. So I do believe that making sure we got the right people on this committee is an important thing. So I I also support that.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Mackey.
Yes, I'd like to nominate the mayor and Councilwoman Amara to sit on the ad hoc committee for us.
Okay, I think that sounds good. I just want to make sure that there's no other council members who'd want to to do it in lieu of. But not seeing anybody else, I think that that seems to to be a good a good fit. Any other questions, though, related to the applications and or this thought about putting together the ad hoc group? Okay, not seeing any other questions. I'll go ahead and move to public comment on this item. Amy, is there any public comment?
There was not. I mean, just make sure we didn't receive any. We did not receive any during this meeting.
Okay, well, we so we have some discussion and it sounded like Councilwoman Mackey, that was a motion. But before we before we take that, are there any other comments that anybody would like to make? Okay, hearing none, Councilwoman Mackey, it sounds like you'd like to make a motion. Go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to move to create a subcommittee with the mayor, Berlin, and Councilwoman Amara to review all the applications and return to us with recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, if the clerk will please take the roll.
Councilmember Dowden Calviel.
I.
Amara.
Yes.
Mackey.
I.
Spockley.
Yes.
And Mayor Berlin.
And I'm an I. Okay, so Councilwoman Amara and I will get together here quickly and go through them and bring back our recommendations. Thank you very much, everybody. Moving on to reports, item number ten, the COVID nineteen update. And I wanted to see, Amy, do we have any city staff that are going to take the lead, Chief Spencer or Canaan? Did either of them have?
Yes, I have I have both chiefs that I can bring up.
So as we add them now, I'll just let you let the council know. A city manager and myself and probably others of you as well continue to have discussions related to enforcement. So we might have some discussion tonight. City manager has been working on, there are a few complaints that have come. And one of our chiefs may be able to expand more, but related to providing education to those businesses. The county's Economic Development Department, specifically Sherry Conway, her office, has been also kind of being a repository for those complaints and then sending those on to city jurisdictions. There are a number of businesses that under the health order were restricted to outdoor operations only, who have not yet followed that. But lots of discussions that our city manager right now as far as steps of how we move forward. I'll let the chiefs jump in as well, but his recommendation at this point is that we continue to focus on our education and continue to see, monitor, you know, what the county does as far as future next steps if enforcement is required. But Chief Canaan, since I see you unmuted and and we see your face first, I'll let you give any reports that you might have related to COVID.
Sure. Well, good evening, Mayor Berlin and council members. So Ryan Canaan, the chief of police for Auburn. And you bring up a lot of good points about what's going on as it relates to COVID and businesses. You know, we understand that a lot of the businesses in our community continues to struggle during these this time. And with this direction from the state and the county, we continue to take really our the educational, like you've highlighted with a lot of businesses. And over the last week, we've received a couple of concerned complaints from the residents and also other council members and uncertain businesses that continue to operate. So we went, we've gone by those businesses, we'll check in with them, we'll re-advice them of the the order as it is. And then, you know, with that, we'll forward it off to public or I'm sorry, Health and Human Services and our Public Health Director to to make sure they handle it the way they see fit.
Great, thank you. Chief Spencer, anything to add to that report?
No, I'll simply echo Chief Canaan's comments. As you know, for us, it's not an enforcement issue, but really more about an education issue and about recognizing that we still have a problem in the community. We're still continuing to see spread of COVID nineteen. Numbers continue to increase, even though we're in a much lower exposure related to many of the other counties throughout the state. I just want to underscore how important it is to provide protection for yourself, use the appropriate face coverings and healthcare directives as provided by our health officials for the county. And that's really all I have to report for tonight.
Great, thank you very much. Questions from the council for either of our chiefs? Yeah, Councilwoman Mackey, go ahead.
Either chief, I it doesn't matter. I, good evening, Chief Spencer and Chief Canaan. Are you getting much pushback when you're out there trying to educate people? How are you being, you know, are you being thanked? Or are you getting a lot of flack from people that are have their businesses open that shouldn't or so on?
Well, this is Chief Canaan. I can speak for what I've heard from staff as we haven't received much flack or pushback. I think a lot of people are still navigating this these times like the rest of us and trying to understand what's what's the right thing, what's the wrong thing. And, you know, this is a very divisive issue when it comes to this COVID response, masks or not. We continue to get information from the county that, you know, we continue to try to follow and educate the public on what type of masks they should be wearing. So we haven't, to answer the question, haven't had a whole lot of pushback. Obviously, we've had a number of concerned citizens report things and we'll just follow up on those as we can. And we'll continue to work with our county counterparts on addressing any of those issues. But I think for the most part, we've seen a lot of people doing the, you know, what's been asked of them. I regularly walk downtown and Old Town and there's a number of people wearing their masks. A number of the businesses have established those rules for their own business. And I think that's an important piece is that each one of these businesses, you know, direct how the customers are coming in, you know, and asking people to wear their masks or and maintain that six-foot distance from everybody. So with that, I think there's a lot of people being respectful of each other, certainly in the city of Auburn. So I think that's going so far.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, not seeing any chiefs. Thank you very much for joining us this evening and your continued efforts here. Moving on to item number eleven.
Mr. Mayor, I just had a question for you. I know that you have your weekly meetings. And I just wondered, really, I know that the county will be distributing some of those care funds for businesses and nonprofits. Do we know what the breakdown might be of those that have applied within the city limits for those funds?
So tomorrow, the Board of Supervisors is agendized to formulate the program itself. So I don't even think the application is out there yet. They have eight million dollars. For those of you who don't know, there's eight million dollars of cares funding for this program. They have decided to allot seven million of it to businesses and one million to nonprofits. My understanding is that tomorrow, and I have not read the agenda packet, my understanding is tomorrow they will create the parameters, if you will, for the 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 program itself. I will note, and we briefly mentioned it at our economic workshop on Friday, our Chamber of Commerce has provided some input into the program itself. And if I'm not mistaken, there, the county staff have reached out to city staff as well to get input. So I think after tomorrow, whatever action they take, it will be on us and all and likely, if not before, but at least on Friday, have additional information that we can share with our businesses of what are the requirements and what can that money then be used for? So eight million dollars, it would, and it was made clear, though, that money will be available not just in the unincorporated of Plastra County, but the county will fund grants for businesses and nonprofits that are located within our city and other cities within Plastra County.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I look forward to further updates then on Friday. Thank you.
Sure. And one thing I'll just note for you, I mentioned this briefly at our economic workshop that we held on Friday with these two of our business associations or the chamber and business associations. But one thing that I have continued to work with our county leaders and at least advocate for is, you know, the the notion of a number of the parameters and thresholds that keep us on the monitoring list. And there was a lot of rumor at the end of last week. And there was a lot of rumor uh at the end of last week that we were gonna be taken off the state's monitoring list, but in fact, that was an error on the state in their calculations of determining whether or not we had the percentage of new cases to, to keep on that list. Uh, however, the main two thresholds of that are on there and that are a concern are uh hospital capacity, um, specifically the ICU capacity. And the fact that uh it's kind of a moving target, because at the end of the day, it really is not how many beds does each of these hospitals have available. Uh, it's how many are staff? And since uh hospitals tend to try to ensure that they have just enough staff to cover this specific amount of patients they have, uh, you know, that can be a moving target. And so unfortunately, a lot of what we, what is decided to keep us on that list is really based on our hospitals' staffing uh levels. And so uh continued dialogue and discussion, working with those hospitals because they do have search capacity. Uh, the region has search capacity specifically at uh the um old Arco Arena. And the ability to again use that, if you remember, some of our residents actually went there back in uh geez, April or May. Um, but they closed that down due to the lack of patients. And so to me, that continues to be an area that's of weakness. You know, everybody talks about, let's stick to the science and, and I agree, and the science says wear your mask, do your precautions, prevent the spread. But we're really basing a lot of these state thresholds on numbers that really don't have to do with the increase of the virus, but rather um just in how you calculate um the numbers. One, another threshold that will keep us on the monitoring list is the number, the percentage of uh testing. Anything above eight percent positivity testing will, will get you on the list. We've been hovering at about seven point five percent. I didn't see what it was today. However, the county last week uh pushed messaging out that said only those that have symptoms or are at risk really should go get tested, which means we're more likely to be testing those that are positive. So our positivity rate is gonna go up just because we're not testing everybody else, generally speaking. So we're gonna be on that monitoring list probably for some time. Um, and I just wanted to mention those items that lots of dialogue between our public health officers because everybody's saying, follow the science, follow the science, follow the science. And I think we are as a city and as a county. But it's really not science that's driving these thresholds. It's really um, you know, policy um elements. And so how we communicate that continues to be important. And at the end of the day, it goes back to, I think, what Chief Spencer said, and I, I just wanna reiterate that is wearing face coverings when you're in public. Uh, uh, social distancing, practical distance, six feet, uh washing your hands. And the more important one, if you read the diet, the data that the county provides each week, it's really because of family gatherings. And that is really the leading cause um of, of, of the transmission. And so we really need to continue to stress that uh weddings and birthdays and baby showers and, and all these other types of celebrations that we all love. That's, that's where the, the community spread continues to be a problem. So just wanted to mention that, that that's where we as a community have the ability to, to, to take a denton in um the spread of, of COVID-19. I'll get off my soapbox, but just a little bit of education that is not really um in the, the general public. But I would urge all of you, if you don't, and I know you're all educated, so you do, but those watching the summaries that county does every Friday really go and show you, um, because most people don't realize that our Hispanic and our Latino population, which make up about twelve percent of Placer County, uh, are the highest ethnicity of patients of COVID-19. And so will, how we support, um, support that, that group um continues to need to be a focus. In addition to all these other things we've talked about. So um, with that, uh, Councilwoman Mara, do you have a comment or question?
Just going to add, um, I think it's important, what I've been reading, being outdoors is, is very important. So get out as much as you can and um stay distance yourself, but being outdoors is, is very helpful. And I think we're following that with opening up our restaurants and having them go outdoors. So I, I appreciate all that.
Yeah, one other item I, I would just mention too, uh, speaking of outdoors, we had our first Pilates uh session from a local Pilates studio uh in the School Park Preserve uh today. Um, so they were able to have a small group uh that uh the city manager permitted. Um, and uh he is finishing up this week a procedure of using uh city parks uh in coordination and collaboration with ARD as well. And so then we'll open up any uh business that has again a small, low impact, meaning small size uh that could potentially use some of our public space beyond just restaurants. So Councilwoman Mara, thank you for reminding me of that. I'm uh Councilwoman uh Don Calviel.
I was just gonna mention, and I took advantage of the fact that my manicurist performed a manicure outside. So we're, they're doing that too. So it was hot, but uh, you know? Anyway.
Yeah, well, thank you for showing us your nails.
Yes, I got them done outside, but yes, I agree, uh, that good old fashioned vitamin D is great, so, and yeah, thank you.
Very good. Any other uh questions from the council? Yeah, Councilwoman Mackey, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, I just wanted to confirm that we have to be below eight percent for the seven day positivity rate. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right at, we're right at eight percent right now. And we've had a seventy percent increase of seventeen percent. So that doesn't bode well for us.
Yeah, and again, if we're telling people only those that probably maybe potentially have symptoms, again, it's only gonna, you know, increase that positivity rate, not necessarily because more people are getting it, but back to just how you look at statistics. The more people that get tested that are negative, drive that down and kind of balance it out. And again, I'm not trying to downplay by any means right now. Uh, you know, the, the criticalness of it, it's just back to, it's all in how you splice the numbers on, you know, the, the magnitude of this issue. And so the county did, um, I just wanna mention our Health and Human Services uh Director of the County did reiterate that, you know, the county does not necessarily think that these are per se fair uh thresholds and continues to try to advocate to, you know, work with the city or work with the state, I should say, to update those so that they are a little more science-based and a little bit more based on factors that aren't really within policy control or in staffing level control of things like that. And so hopefully our county will be successful at, at advocating that. Um, but again, that's not a downplay of of uh, you know, the deadliness of, of this disease. And a couple more people, um, you know, the, the virus has killed a few more people. I will note again, just for complete transparency, it was made very clear that these patients um did have underlying medical conditions, so that too is an important part of the overall conversation. Uh, if there's nothing else on our COVID-19 um update, I'll go ahead and move to item number 11. Chiefs, thank you very much. Item number 11, uh, City Council Committee Report. So I'll just start in the order that I can see. So Councilwoman Omar, any reports?
Uh, yes, um, I went to the mosquito and vector um orientation and meeting and actually it, it was very, very informative. I learned a lot of mosquitoes. Uh, and very interesting, uh, scientific. And there was one case of West Nile. Uh, there was a mosquito that was found. And um, I wanna encourage everybody to also make sure that you don't have any standing water because they can lay their eggs and thousands of eggs in, in just a little bit of standing water. So um um, I thoroughly enjoyed it. So um, and very informative.
Great.
I have a question for.
Oh, go ahead, Councilwoman uh Don Calviel, go ahead.
Yes, um, so they had a, a positive case of West Nile in Placer County?
It wasn't a positive case. They found a mosquito that was, was carrying it.
Carrying it in Placer County. Was it in uh South Placer County? Do you remember?
I don't, I, you know what, I, I can't recall exactly where they found it. They, they, uh, they do go on the Stevens Trail. They have a number of places that they uh pick moski, you know, pick up the mosquitoes from. And um, so anyway, they found one, so they're concerned. And there has been, um, they do, you know, spraying at a minimal uh just, just to protect us. And it's, it's very good, very good committee, wonderful uh what they do.
Thank you.
I will note that in at least my five years, this is the first time we've had a report on this committee, mainly because uh, the meeting usually historically has conflicted with our city council meeting. So we've always, since I've been around, appointed a member of the public to represent us. So uh, Councilwoman Mara, thank you very much um for that. Any other uh reports from you? Any other reports? No, okay, seeing that. Uh, Councilwoman uh Don Calviel.
I don't have anything to report today.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Mackey.
Well, we did have a pioneer board meeting, but I'm gonna wait until uh my next meeting to report on it because we uh push a lot of things to the next meeting. So I'm gonna wait. Um, we didn't push a lot, but there's some things I wanna find out before I report them out to you guys. And we had an Economic Development Commission meeting. Matt, you wanna report on that? I'm just gonna let you do that. I'm done.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, council members, hopefully, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so we did have an EDC meeting. I, I did show up, but a few minutes later, I was struggling to get off of another Zoom meeting. Uh, seems that life is busy with Zoom and team meetings these days. Um, but at the meeting, we, we did kind of go over some of the initiatives that uh the committee wants to pursue uh this upcoming year. We have some, some cleanup work and some information gathering that I think Cheryl and I both left with some tasks to get accomplished for the committee. Uh, CBG funds and, and what they could be used for were one of the items. The other was um rounding up some of the very good work that Bob and Moore have done with respect to promotion of the city of Auburn. Uh, that's in the form of, of narratives, uh imagery, as well as videos. All of those things, uh, we've got a fairly good catalog of. And we're gonna gather those up and, and try to get them organized uh through the efforts of the EDC. Um, and there are a few other things that I don't recall off the top of my head, but uh needless to say, they're anxious to kind of keep things moving, very anxious to get to meet John and um start working with him on you know, some of our issues that are affecting our downtown and Old Town business districts. Um, uh, next item that I had to share with the city, we did have all of our uh subcommittee and committee meetings for Seco were canceled for a summer recess, I guess is what we call it, for the month of July. But I did have the opportunity to have a, have a small meeting with Seco staff. One of the things we're working on is a regional uh purchasing program. Uh, not only equipment, but supplies for roadway maintenance and, and overlay work. Uh, we found a couple of cities in the country that do something similar on a regional basis that we're getting more information on. And we'll be tracking um, tracking that information down. Seco staff has got a couple of folks they've assigned to this, so I'm intrigued. It was an idea that we brought up, I brought up to Seco staff right when I got on the board. Cause they do have other regional programs, whether it's Health and Human Services, uh, excuse me, um, HR or other technical support that they provide to their uh committee members or, or um to the cog members. This was an interesting idea that had a simmer for a little while, but I do feel like we're getting a little traction on it. So I'll continue to keep the council posted on that. It's um probably a bit of a heavy lift, but I've got a couple of folks at Seco staff that are very excited to look into it, so we'll, we'll, we'll keep pursuing, see where it goes.
Fantastic, that's uh good to hear. Uh, Councilwoman Maggie, go ahead.
I forgot, I wanted to encourage everybody to go buy the State Theater on Friday nights and buy popcorn and candy from our they will deliver it at the curb and uh it's a fundraiser for the State Theater. Uh, we're still meeting, we're still trying to figure, do, figure out some ways to um maybe do a drive-in movie or uh something. It's very expensive just fairgrounds, but uh we're reaching out to our um our longtime uh supporters and hopefully we are going to stay afloat here during all this. We're working hard to do it. So um, I just wanted to let you know that.
No, great, thank, I think several of us have taken, ca, taken you up on that offer and uh got some popcorn and, and uh candies and went home and watched a movie. So uh, great fundraiser and uh, um, Councilwoman Mackey, they're doing that every Friday through the summer or?
I believe so. Um, uh, they've done it twice now, so I believe I got an email today and I was gone over the weekend, so I haven't read it, so I'll find out.
Gotcha, okay. You can always follow the State Theater uh on uh Facebook. I know they post it there as well, so thank you very much uh for that. A couple of things from myself. Uh, give it one more time, I was talking over you.
Live from Auburn dot com. That's their um, what, our website, and then you can also get the Facebook page.
Great, perfect, okay. Um, appreciate that. Um, a couple of things to report, I just wanted to let you all know that the Old Town Business Association uh voted in practically a new board. Uh, and so I attended last week their first uh new board meeting uh with their new board and their new president, uh attorney Nina uh Ashford Solarno um is their new president. So looking forward to working with her um down in Old Town. And then just wanted to uh set a reminder, somebody just mentioned it, but uh the uh Fairgrounds is doing a number of drive-in events uh this weekend, including Fast Fridays. On Friday, you can uh instead of going and sitting in the stands, which are not allowed by state public uh order, you can drive up and they've got a huge uh television monitor in the um, in the parking lot that will be set up so vehicles can pay. Um, the, the cost of these events, uh, when you look at the dollar amount, you know, are, are a little hefty, but if you think about, uh, you know, you can pile in the family into your car, I'm invited by a number of family members in your car. It comes back down to the, the normal amount. Uh, they also have a live band playing over the weekend and on Sunday, uh, they've got uh some new movies. I think it's the new Trolls uh world tour uh film, if I'm not mistaken. So um, if you wanna take your kids, and I say that lightly, cause my wife and I just watched it, it is a good movie. So uh, support the uh, support our fairgrounds uh through, through that as well. So with that, in record time, that concludes our meeting. If there's no other city council courts, we do not have a closed session, however, for the group and for the public. Uh, City Council will likely hold its closed session this week, um, just not tonight, but we will hold our closed session later in the week. So with that, everybody uh in, in record time here, I'll conclude the meeting and uh hopefully see you all tomorrow morning at uh Medler's. If not, we'll see you at the closed session or at our economic workshop on Friday. So with that, uh, have a good night, everybody.